Everybody, everybody ready?
Yes, I lost my clothes.
Everybody ready?
We got quite the crowd here.
Take a deep breath. Call the May 7th council meeting to order. Please rise to the pledge if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to get this over with.
I know. I understand.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, Laura.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Here.
Mayor Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
City assessor?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Planning and zoning director?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the reminder. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Do we have any citizens like to comment?
Yes.
Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Paul Ernstin. I'm here tonight along with my wife Carolyn and sister and brother-in-law Marilyn and David Galloway to comment on your agenda item, discussion of Riverwalk erosion. We are the owners of the property at 561st Street. This is the fourth home from the west on the bank above the city property along the south shore of the Manistee River channel. We have observed erosion changes there over the years. In the past, these have always been on city-owned property and out of our control. We are now losing our backyard property, including our lawn and two large trees. We can still remember when the children were able to play on the beach, excuse me, at the foot of the hill. That land has long since disappeared. We have also observed over the years how the longships must use ball thrusters to get around the bend, how that churns up the sand and pounds on the shore at the foot of the bank in front of our property. This home is very important to us because my mother and father-in-law, Ann and Lloyd Hughes, were the original purchasers of that lot from the city, and they built the family home on it. We now have four generations of family coming to the home regularly. Excuse me. We feel we can no longer safely let them enjoy the backyard and our river and harbor We normally have several family gatherings at this home throughout the year, which we can no longer enjoy. Also because of the loss of our property, we fear damage to our foundation and eventually the loss of our home. Thank you for your concern and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Tom Swedenborg. I live at 562 First Street, the next house to the west of them. I've been here for about 22 years. I appeared here about 15 years ago pleading with the city council to do something about the disappearing of the hill beyond my property, the city property. You're gonna hear some talk about erosion tonight and such, and when you hear the word erosion, you think of the slow wearing down by wind or water. The big problem is not that, it's the dredging. It's the dredging that's hauled away the side banks of the river. There used to be nice gentle hillsides there and beach down below, but all that's been dredged away in the attempt to maintain a deep channel. This deep channel is a fairly recent idea. Years ago, there might be three, four, I don't know, nine foot of water out there. The schooners that hauled away millions of board foot of lumber, they only drew eight or nine feet. This deep water channel, that's something that started back in about 1945. The industry that provided prosperity here started demanding, wanting deeper and deeper channel and made accommodations for longer and longer boats coming in, and that was great. You know, for two or three generations, people here in town could walk out of high school over here, go over to the lakefront, get a job in a factory, provide for their family, raise children, have cars, maybe a boat, send their kids off to college. You know, but all that prosperity that came into this county, maybe some care should have been taken protecting the riverbanks. They've just slowly been dredged away. When I brought this to the council's attention about 15 years ago, I was told that they couldn't act on my behalf, and they had to take care of the city dwellers at large. Well, I think it is a problem for the city dwellers at large. Every piece of tourist information you see around here talks about the Riverwalk, and it is the Riverwalk that makes this area special. Again, you're gonna hear about erosion, the sage, water underneath it washing it away, and ice getting under it. None of that would have happened if the sand hill hadn't been dredged away. That's the big problem. And, you know, as you go further out, you see all this revetment, be it seawall or rocks to protect property, but we're left to defend our own property. Currently, you know, this wonderful Riverwalk is closed for the last 20% of its being because of the under, the unsettling of a couple sections. There's currently seven trees laying down across it from the hill that is sliding down. It has to be maintained, it has to be taken care of. The hillside needs revetment, be it in rocks or seawall, and I know that's very costly, but who's gonna protect this property? The city wanted some additional money some 60 years ago. They divvied up, plotted eight lots at the end of First Street and sold those off. They didn't tell people, there was no fine print saying, "We're gonna dredge your yard away," but that's what's happening, and it's happening to my neighbor. They're losing actual property. They're losing their yard. I've had to put safety lines or fencing off the east end of my yard because what used to be a hillside going down to the water is now a dangerous precipice.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Anyway, I would appeal to the city to protect my property, restore their property, protect their property, and the other homes along the riverfront. I think it needs some action taken, and I would hope you can do something for the taxpayers, the homeowners in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Mike Herbert, live at 306 Hancock Street. I have what I believe is a valid possible direction, proceed towards the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. I'm sure you've probably all seen this by now, but for the sake of the record, here goes. Manistee has been offered a twice-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The first being approximately 50 years ago when the Coho massed at the mouth of the Manistee River, which I believe was in 67 or 68. Fishermen from all over the country, from all over the world stormed Manistee, throwing their money at us. Those in charge recognized that gift, they picked up that fish, and they ran with it. They supported it, making possible the marinas, boating facilities, and ancillary businesses that to this day, 50 years later, continue to be a prominent economic boon to Manistee. The second gift also handed to us is the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. The act allows municipalities to authorize consumption in a public place. End of argument. It's allowable. It's council's choice. I suggest that Manistee get out in front of this and seize the vanguard. We have the extraordinary opportunity to become the regional Mecca of acceptance if we seize the lead. Or we can be an also-ran, allowing some other municipality to grab the spotlight and all the low-hanging fruit that would come with it. If Manistee chooses to seize the vanguard and the first headlines that will come with it, letting it be known that we are law-friendly, they will come. By making the fine for public use negligible rather than punitive, Manistee will become overnight, again, a destination. The market is huge and immediately available, an eager, ready, willing, and pent-up market in quest of a friendly space. The impact and response will also be huge and immediate. You'll have your hands full trying to hold on. But harness that siege moving upriver with all that pent-up force behind it, and you will have established an economic force that will live on for 50 years from now. Please do not turn aside this economic gift. Be not only on the correct side, on the historically correct side, but on the economically correct side. Be the vanguard, carpe diem. The inevitability of marijuana consumption becoming as widely and socially acceptable as alcohol is inevitable. I mean, it's a foregone conclusion. So why stall? Why take these baby steps? Grab a hold of this. This is an incredible economic opportunity, and to just turn that away is ridiculous in my mind. However, in order to gain those first headlines, it is imperative, as city council, at its first opportunity, act to make the fines for public use negligible, and then embrace that marketing and branding opportunity.
Have one minute, sir.
In the, in the things that are happening tonight regarding marijuana, is there anything in there that's not on the agenda that concerns the penalties for public use of marijuana?
Is this a time for you to make comments, sir? Not a time for question answering? Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to agenda items? Seeing none, consent agenda. Whoops. I'm sorry. I didn't see her get up. I would adjust my glasses. There we go.
My name's Michelle Hanson, and I was born and raised in Manistee. I've worked here, I work here also. My concern is the recreational marijuana. We're considering having adopted in Manistee to sell it. I'm concerned because our city, our, our city right now is, I believe, it's 65 years and older, like 25% of our population, and I think if we want to get young families to fill our schools and our community, we're not going to be, it's gonna be difficult for us to advertise, to bring young families here when we have, we've added recreational marijuana sales to our Manistee. It just doesn't sound to me like it's a very good positive. We have issues with alcoholism in town, we have issues with drug addiction in town, and now we're bringing more drugs, recreational drug use into our town, and I don't think it's going to promote Manistee as a safe family environment. And I just wanted to talk to you about, when you're considering that, to please consider the young families and the people that we want to bring, bring here. Manistee, when you drive through the city often down many of the streets, and it doesn't matter what side of the highway you're on, the homes are becoming dilapidated and the properties are depreciating. A lot of the yards are filled with not nice, nice yards. Manistee is filled with, not filled with, but there is an atmosphere of hopelessness in Manistee already, and I think we need to promote positive things for our community with our, our new hospital, Munson Manistee Hospital. They're building it up, and they're promoting that, and I just think we have other areas to look at and to promote for Manistee, for our young families, and for our community in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment on agenda-related items? Try again, seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of Minutes, Cash Balance, Quarterly Financial Update, Quarterly Investment Update, Consideration of Zoning Ordinance Amendment Z-19-01, Article 5, Section 514E. Notification Regarding Next Work Session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. You do? I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at all on this? I see none. Please take the roll.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed? Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none? New business. Consideration of Approving the Downtown Development Authority Proposed Budget for Physical Year 2019-2020.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
I would like to request that we table this.
Procedural question.
Table it.
Can we table it prior to reading the motion?
You're moving to table the motion, then there's no motion made? Then I would think that you'd want to make a motion first.
Okay, we'll make the motion.
Okay.
The city of Manistee is required by state statutes to approve the budget for the Downtown Development Authority before it can be adopted by the Downtown Development Board. The DDA presented their proposed budget to city council at the April 16, 2019 city council work session. If approved by council, the Downtown Development Authority Board must still hold a public hearing on their budget and vote to adopt it. At this time, council could take action to approve the Downtown Development Authority Proposed Budget for Physical Year 2019-2020. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Zelinski, I would like us to table this until the next.
We need to get, we need to get a motion.
Well, I think that you want a motion to approve if that's, if council was interested in that, and then if there's that motion, then a motion to table and a support, and you can vote on the motion to table. And we're talking about tabling it to a specific meeting or the next meeting?
Yes.
Do I have, do I have a motion? Do I have, do I, do I have a motion to approve this? This budget?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any discussion?
If council person, uh, being wanted to move to table, I think this would be.
I would like to move to table it. I would like us to move to table it.
Okay, no further discussion? Is there, there's a motion on the table to be tabled? Do I have a second?
I think George is.
I'll second it.
I have a second.
This is a motion to the May 21st meeting?
Yes.
Would you like that on the next work session?
Yes, I would also like it on the next work session.
Okay, so a motion to table to the next regular meeting and a motion to put it on the, have it on the next work session. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? There is no discussion, it goes right to a vote. Please take the vote.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Adopting the 2019-2020 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. Under Section 7-4, 7-4 of the Charter, the annual budget must be adopted before May 15 of each year. The budget has been a subject of multiple work sessions and public hearings. At this time, council could take action to adopt the resolution approving the 2019-2020 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan for the city of Manistee. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the capital, the 2019-2020 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the vote.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Considering, consideration of designating the city clerk as a Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan Coordinator. January 21, 2014, city council adopted the Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan and specifically named city clerk Michelle Wright as a Title VI Coordinator. Upon Mrs. Wright's retirement, the new city clerk took over the responsibilities of making sure the city remains in compliance with the Title VI. It is requested that the council change the Title VI Coordinator to be designated as a city clerk regardless of who holds that, the position. At this time, council could take action to designate the city clerk as Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan Coordinator and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the documents. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So this changes the doc, the job description for the city clerk?
No, it just, before we had specifically identified Michelle Wright as the, as the coordinator, and now we're just saying it's gonna be the city clerk regardless of who holds that position.
Okay.
Any other?
It's always assumed that the city clerk would do it because Michelle had done it for so long.
Right.
So.
We've just formalized that.
Okay.
Any other? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of Amendments to Council Guidelines CP-10. Amendments to Council Guideline Policy CP-10 are being recommended to reflect council decision to appoint the city manager rather than the mayor to the Downtown Development Authority and to add the newly-created Downtown Development Authority Citizen Council under mayor oil appointment. At this time, council could take action to amend CP-10, Section 21, Committees to Add the Downtown Development Authority Citizen Council, and Section 22, Appointment to Strike the Language That Appoints the Mayor to the Downtown Development Authority. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper? Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Lot Split, excuse me, 170 Wocheski Drive, Partial 51, 190-143-00. The applicant, Greg Ferguson, is requesting to split 170 Wocheski Drive into two parcels, which, one lot being 42,688 square feet and the other lot 121,096 square feet. The planning commission has reviewed the recommend, and recommends this action. At this time, council could take action to approve the lot split for Greg Ferguson, 170 Wocheski Drive, Partial 51-190-143-00 into two separate lots. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious if anybody knows why he's splitting them. I mean, I'm just curious. What is the purpose of splitting them?
As far as I know, the, there is, he has no use for the other section of land. He has a building on the smaller portion of it, and the larger part has just been vacant since he's owned the property.
Okay. It, yeah, I'm just, I was curious, so.
I don't know if he has any other pending issues, but basically, for him, it's excess property.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of authori, thank you. Consideration of Authorizing a Consumer Energy Joint Application for Manistee River Channel Sampling. Consumer Energy wants to collect segment samples and inspect riprap in a Manistee River Channel adjacent to property owned by the city of Manistee. To perform the work, Consumer needs to file a joint permit application with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Michigan Department of Natural, Michigan Department of Environmental A condition of the joint application is a letter of authorization by the city of Manistee as the work will occur adjacent to property owned by the city. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor to sign a letter authorizing Consumer Energy to file a joint permit application. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Can somebody basically describe exactly why and what the procedure is going to be for the collection? Yeah, we have Mr. Andrew Santini, he's with Consumers Energy. He's been our point person, and he's in the audience and would be willing to address that.
Hi, Andrew Santini with Consumers Energy. Can you just repeat that question real quick?
Basically, what is it exactly? What's the reason for doing this, and what do you expect to, the outcome to be?
So, you know, as you guys may know, we are doing a remediation upstream of the 31 Bridge at one of our former manufactured gas plant sites. We are planning to do some dredging potentially between the railroad bridge and 31 Bridge in 2020. So at this time, we'd like to go out and collect some sediment samples immediately downstream of the bridge to see if there's, if we need to address anything downstream of the bridge. So sediment collection is taking a cornar dredge, so I need, taking sediment from the top six to 12 inches, or using a core, a vibra core, it's a four-inch tube that would go down two to three feet. We pull that up, we look at the sediment, see if there's any impacts in there, and do a visual characterization.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
You don't do any chemical testing or anything?
No, it's, it's visual.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of An Agreement with Safebuilt Michigan to Perform Building Plan Review Services and Inspections. Safebuilt Michigan LLC was one of the four companies that responded to city's request for proposals for professional building and plan review services and professional building inspection services. It was determined that Safebuilt Michigan LLC provides the best option for the city based on a review of all proposals. The contract with four municipalities currently utilize their services. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement that will allow Safebuilt Michigan LLC to perform building plan reviews and building inspection services for the city of Manistee. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have just one question. Is, is this replacing, is this work being done by another contractor now, or was this work being done in-house prior to this contract?
It, it's right now being performed by the state of Michigan inspectors.
Okay.
So we're gonna, in essence, bring it back in-house through a, through a contractor.
Okay, thank you.
And under, I have under the impression that this is going to make the service much faster?
We'll have, number one, we'll have more control over it, and they're, they are suggesting that they can perform better than the state is right now. The biggest concern we have is that we can't get any information. It's very difficult to get information from the state in terms of the outcomes of building inspections. In fact, if we want it, we have to submit a FOIA, Freedom of Information Request Form to them, and they don't always respond to those. And what information we get is very minimal and hard for the assessor to go through and utilize properly. So, that's, that's, those are the two benefits. I, I think we can give better service to the community in terms of timeliness and accessibility, and we can get better information for our assessor so she can continually keep the property cards updated.
And would there be any additional cost to the city under this contract?
No. In fact, what they initially offered was that, recommended that we keep the same fee schedule that we're currently using, the state's fee schedule, and they would collect eighty percent of the, of the fees, and then the remaining twenty percent would be remitted to the city. And we have to go through a state process to get authorization to bring it back in-house. So they have experience in doing that for other communities. So for the first six months, they're going to take eighty-five percent of the fees, and that extra five percent is to cover the, the work that they are performing to get authorization from the state for us to perform our own. So, I think it's a very good agreement for the city for a number of reasons.
Thank you.
Just have a quick question. The twenty percent, where does that go? General fund?
That go right into the general fund.
And am I also understanding that if they require special training, that we also pay for that?
No, that would be their responsibility.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution changing dates for the July and December border review. The border review meets in July and December. As a contractor, Great Lakes Assessing is unable to attend border review meetings in all of their contract municipalities on the same date. The state of Michigan allows municipalities to select alternate dates. At this time, Council could take action to select alternate dates for July and December border review. Wednesday, July seventeenth, and Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty nineteen, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This is a, this is becoming a routine so that we can help the, the assessor balance her contractual responsibilities with other municipalities, so I don't see any problem with it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of resolution to allow the July and December border review to grant prior year principal residence exemptions. The resolution gives the July and December border review authority to grant principal residence exemptions for prior years what they signed request. At this time, Council could take action to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution allowing the July and December border review to grant principal residence exemptions to benefit the taxpayer of Manistee. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of the Peer Foundation Run, the Peer Five K Race. The Peer Foundation is planning to run the Peer Five K Race fundraiser on Saturday, August tenth, twenty nineteen. They will, the event will begin and end in the memorial parking lot. The race will require street closures on Fifth Avenue, Monroe Street, and Lake Shore for approximately one hour. At this time, Council could take action to approve the request to use the city's services, parks, and streets for the Peer Foundation Run, the Peer Five K Race on August tenth, twenty nineteenth, subject to appropriate department approvals. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I noticed that there was some other things going on during that day. Is there any problem with the city being able to do this race as well as Grapes on the River and a couple other things that are going on?
There shouldn't be any conflict with that. Grapes on the River is during the afternoon and early evening. This race is in a different location, but it's later in the evening, and I believe to take advantage of the sunset. So, I don't see any conflict with that. Right?
Any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of a USDA Rural Development Form four-four-two, dash, seven, Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow. As part of the process of obtaining a low-interest wastewater loan from USDA Rural Development, the city is required to submit a Form four-four-two, dash, seven, Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow that must be approved by City Council. At this time, Council could take action to approve USDA Rural Development Form four-four-two, dash, seven, Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the form. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Did you get that?
Who was the second?
Who seconded that?
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the vote.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac? Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of license agreement with Consumer Energy for environmental testing and remediation on city property. Consumer Energy is requesting a license agreement for a piece of city property along the River Channel behind the American Legion post on Mason Street, directly west of the property where Consumers is currently performing remediation efforts. The license agreement is necessary as the shoreline stabilization required will extend beyond the boundaries of the property Consumer Energy is remediating and onto the city parcel. At this time, Council could take action to approve the license agreement with Consumer Energy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I would like to know more about the types of environmental testing that's being done and the types of remediation that would be done.
And the duration. Hi, Andrew Santini of Consumers again. The, the types of environmental testing and the types of environmental, was the second part of that question?
Environmental testing and remediation.
Okay, so, as part of the work that we started last year, and we were delayed a few months, that's extended on into this year. So part of our, the work that we're doing is solidifying the impacts in place. So we're mixing cement with slag and water, creating a solidified monolith. So the, the impacts that are anywhere from twenty to fifty feet below grade are solidified and no longer mobile in the environment. So, as part of that, we're going, we're going to be doing the bank and the in-stream this year, and as part of this, the license agreement would be to put sheet pile in, and that, that needs to go, sheet pile cofferdam, so we do all of our mixing within that so we won't be in the river. And then as far as the restoration goes, we needed to do that as far as, all of our impacts are on our property. So the only thing on the city's property would be installing some riprap to allow, so that there wouldn't be any, as much erosion. As far as the environmental testing goes, we're not doing any environmental testing at this phase. Those were all done previous to this, before the remediation design was implemented. So, all those impacts are getting, like I said, solidified in place.
Oh, well, it says environmental testing.
Well, it's just a, it's a generic, it's just says environmental testing, but for what we need it, we're not doing any testing on the property. It's just for sheet pile and for putting riprap for erosion potential.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the long-winded.
Anybody else? Thank you. Please take the vote.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of adopting Resolution nineteen, dash, eleven, Establishing Ordinance Fees. The city attorney has drafted, drafted Resolution nineteen, dash, eleven, Establishing Application and Renewal Licensing Fee for Recreational Marijuana Establishments. The city attorney has also provided Council with a memorandum outlining the various increases in service and required, required by the city departments in connection with the licensing of recreational marijuana establishments in the city. The memo of resolution supports a five-thousand-dollar application and renewal license fee for recreational marijuana establishments. At this time, Council could take action to adopt Resolution nineteen, eleven, Establishing Ordinance Fees. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of adopting Chapter eight-six-seven Recreational Marijuana. The city attorney has drafted Ordinance nineteen, dash, four, Chapter eight-six-seven Recreational Marijuana to address the authorization of marijuana establishments, operational standards for marijuana-growing establishments, safety-compliance establishments, secure-transport establishments, micro-business establishments, and micro-retail within the city of Manistee. Authorization of the ordinance adoption comes from Initiated Law one of twenty eighteen as was approved by voters at the November sixth, twenty eighteen election. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, Council could take action to introduce Ordinance nineteen, dash, fourteen, Chapter eight-six-seven Recreational Marijuana. Do I have a motion?
Point of order, do we, if we have an issue with this, do we make the, make?
I would say that we have a motion to approve it. That's what Council is inclined to do, and if there's a change that we want to discuss, then a motion to amend that.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any discussion?
Yes. I would like in the unlawful activities, which is eight-six-seven, dash, one, or dot, one-four unlawful activities, I would like to strike, the first part says, any act which is a violation of MCL three-three-three, dot, two-seven-nine-five-four, or any amendment thereto shall also be considered a violation of this ordinance. Most of this ordinance, in fact, all of the ordinance is related to the licensing and distribution and all of those parcels to marijuana. Is that not correct?
That, that is correct, yes.
So the next unlawful activities, it also has a statement that says, "It shall be unlawful to consume marijuana in the public place in the city of Manistee except in a location designated by the Act of the City Council for consumption and only when not accessible to persons under the age of twenty-one." I would like to have that portion struck from this ordinance because when you come down to penalties and enforcement, this ordinance has, "Any person who violates any portion or provisions of the ordinance shall be responsible for a municipal civil infringement subject to a payment of a civil fine of five hundred dollars plus cost." And I believe the, the law basically has a first offense not to exceed one hundred dollars for public use of marijuana.
That's correct. The state statute says that. The state statute also says we can enact an ordinance that says up to five hundred dollars, but that's not what we were, this, this penalty section was just mirroring what was in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance. So I, I think that you're suggested of amending this to remove that is one option. The other option would be to add, after the word "cost," which you just cited, except for a violation of Section eight-sixty-seven-fourteen, which shall be subject to a fine of not more than one hundred dollars. That would mirror than the language in the state statute as well, if you wanted, if you wanted that. Otherwise, just, as you suggested, we could also just remove that and then address that if we wanted to at a later time.
Opinion from other council members. Anybody have any opinions?
I would revise it to a hundred right now.
Not to exceed, it would say not to exceed.
Not to exceed one hundred dollars. So it would match the state statute then?
I, I would like to match the state statutes, in my opinion.
Yeah, as long as the language would say not to exceed a one hundred dollar fine.
Yeah, so this, my suggestion again would be right after the word "cost" to reference that, and if Council would, if you'd want to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended and get support, then we can vote on the two motions, and that would be on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor now. How do we proceed?
Well, a motion to amend that motion to reflect the change that we've just discussed. And then if that motion were to pass, the motion, the previous motion would be considered amended, and we vote on that then.
I make that motion that we, that we, after the word "cost," that we add the, and that it shall, the unlawful consumption of marijuana in public places will not exceed one hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? We're, we're voting on the amended motion at this time?
We're voting on the motion to amend right now.
We're voting on the amended motion?
Not on the amended motion, but the motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Sorry.
Seeing no discussion, please take the roll.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
This is just to amend the motion of the hundred dollars. Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now we have a motion?
Now you have a motion with the amended language in the ordinance that is on the floor.
Okay, so we need to vote on the, the motion, the amended motion, which is on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay. No discussion. Go ahead and take the, the roll.
Mayor Proton Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
No.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Ordinance nineteen, dash, fifteen, Amending Chapter two-eight-eight Pay Com- The Pay Commission has had difficulty attracting new members and establishing a quorum for its meetings. Consequently, the Pay Commission has requested that city consider reducing the number of members from seven to five. The hope is that the reduction, the reduced number will make finding new members more manageable and also allow for the presence of three members to establish a quorum for meetings. The city attorney has prepared Ordinance nineteen, dash, fifteen to address the request of the Pay Commission. At this time, or as an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If the ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, Council could take action to introduce Ordinance nineteen, dash, fifteen, Chapter two-eight-eight Pay Commission. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance nineteen dash sixteen, amendment to chapter two eight two Downtown Development Authority. The Downtown Development Authority Act was repealed and replaced with similar provisions with the recodified, Recodified Tax Increment Financing Act, ordinance nineteen dash sixteen, corrects chapter two eight two by reflecting the correct authorizing legislation for the DDA. In addition, the ordinance reflects that the chief executive officer of the city is the mayor, while the current view is that the proper person to identify as the chief executive officer of the city of Manistee is the city manager. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance nineteen dash five, chapter two eight two Downtown Development Authority.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of budget amendment twenty nineteen dash three for fiscal year end June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure the actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state law regarding appropriations. At this time, council could take action to adopt budget amendment twenty nineteen dash three for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Bradford, could you explain the changes?
Mayor Zelinski, members of council, excuse me, we have three items that are requiring budget amendments. The first is for our labor attorney, and that's due to the costs that we have for our police arbitration, and we may actually end up needing another one of those before the end of the fiscal year. The second one would be for repairs and maintenance in the police department, where we've had the water damage, and those are being offset by insurance proceeds. And the final one would be for the deer call, where council authorized that, and that was going to be paid for out of fund balance. Also, we're going to be shifting funds from elections, which were unused, to the council legislative budget, so we can replace the iPads, which are going on seven years old and are starting to become obsolete. Are there any questions?
Any question? Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Appreciate it. Take the roll.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of applications, boards, and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies Downtown Development Authority, Citizen Council, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Pay Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Maroral appointments require a motion, second, and council voter support. Nominees for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on a nominee until one nominee receives majority vote. The following applications have been received. Downtown Development Authority Citizens Council, there are nine vacancies. Applicants must be a resident of the DDA and shall be at least eighteen years of age. This is a new advisory board to the DDA and the city of Manistee in adopting an adoption of the development or tax increment financing plan. These are maroral appointments.
I make a motion.
I'd make, Dennis T. Host, sixty-three Clark Street. I need a second.
Have to do them one at a time.
Yeah, do them one at a time.
I'll make a motion for Dennis Terholtz.
Okay. I make the motion, I have a second.
No second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, just a reminder, these, these two are maroral appointments, so I'm appointing the person. Galvin Galvin Zelinski, I should be able to say that, Eddie Washington Street, unit sixteen. I nominate him. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You need a motion and a support for the mayor's appointment.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Harbor Commission, two vacancies, one term ending ten thirty-one twenty and one term ending ten thirty-one twenty-one. Two members can be non-residents, but must own real estate or a business or professions having a licensed business located in the city. Council, this is a council appointment, there's no second needed. Do I have a?
I'll appoint Trace, I'd like to appoint Tracy Linderman to three oh eight River Street to the term ending ten thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Any discussion?
Ending twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Are we doing it right, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembeaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Notice Communication Announcements, a report from the city assessor. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, and department. At this time, Ms. Molly Whitstone will report on the activities of the assessing office and respond to any questions council may have regarding their activities. Good evening, Molly.
Good evening. Well, another year has come and gone, and we're back again. Can I get the next slide, please? Our taxable value increase, we're still not where we were in two thousand and eleven, but that is due to the industrial personal property that is coming off of the tax rule. Twenty twenty will be the end of that, where all industrial personal property pays it to the state of Michigan under the EEMP, and then we have the small business personal property tax that impacts our values. But overall, we are growing. Next slide, please.
Oh, you didn't mess with, you mentioned residential.
Well, I'm, the residential taxable value, if you look, it has gone up beyond the two thousand and eleven rate. The residential class is carrying the mail for the city.
Thank you.
So, let's look at our assessed value. It actually shows it better on the assessed slide. That's where I was going. Our overall taxable value is very close on the assessed side from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and nineteen. Our residential assessed is more than it was in two thousand and eleven. So, we are having increases in our residential class. That is where most of the value was added on the tax rule this year. We have had a lot of uncappings, a lot of sales, so that is good news for you, but overall, we are not where we were in eleven due to the changes in law. Next slide, please. We have one Renaissance Zone that is the Reith Riley Plant, and that is added in our values, but they pay no taxes other than debt, school debt. The next title is for March Board of Review, two thousand and nineteen. We had sixteen people come in and protest their evaluations. We had eight hardships, thirteen veterans, and eleven personal property late files. This is the first time in a law change due to the small business taxpayer exemption you file once, one and done. We had changes in the law this year where they could appeal their late filings to the Board of Review. And then you just have your taxable value percentage changes. We had an overall roughly two point four nine percent increase in taxable value this year. Our assessed value percentage change, it was a four point four nine percent increase this year. And then we have our assessed value by class. Residential continues, that's our largest class at seventy-six percent. I have to look. Commercial is seventeen, industrial is only two percent, and then personal was six. So, the personal will continue to shrink next year because all of the industrial personal property will be off the tax rule next year. And that is all I have.
Any questions?
Questions?
On the veterans who filed their appeals, what, exactly what kind of appeals were they, and how did that fare out?
The veterans, the state of Michigan passed a law that said if you're one hundred percent qualified disabled, you, or you're one hundred percent unemployable, you are off the tax rule. Now, we've had veterans that have passed away, their wives have sold the homes, they're no longer filing. It just, and then we've had new veterans move into the area. So, that is just a state of Michigan exemption that you bear the brunt of and you get no money back from the state for that.
And then the other, the decline in commercial property tax, is that because of some of our sales that have gone to non, you know, to churches and things like that, some of that commercial?
Some of that was commercial that have gone off of the tax rule, but our commercial class, we were right, we just had to raise a little bit, and we'd been in declining commercial values in the previous years. So, we're just catching steam, and by the ordinance you pass tonight, if you pass it at your next meeting, our commercial class is going to increase exponentially in certain areas.
I think I need a more detailed explanation of what you just said.
Okay, our commercial class, for the first two years that I was here, we, we were over fifty percent, and I had to drop values.
Okay.
So, this is the first year where I had to raise miniscule amounts of money. And then if you pass your medical marijuana bill, then if you pass your ordinance and you're allowing everything that you say you're going to allow, that will impact a certain area greatly and will increase the values because of all the infrastructure they have to put in, and all the changes that will be made to the buildings that will be reflected on their assessment and taxable value side.
Good explanation, thank you.
Yells? Thank you, Molly, we appreciate it. Discussion on Riverwalk erosion. DPW Director Jeff McCula, engineer of record Sean Middleton will make a presentation on Riverwalk repair.
Best news you've probably heard all night is that I'm gonna let Sean do the presentation instead of me.
Thank you.
Sean, do you want the clicker?
While they're trying to get that up, I'll just fill the space a little bit. Erosion is a natural process that happens along the river and lake shore in Manistee year after year. With the lake levels as high as they are right now, they're obviously worse, and we've been seeing signs of that for the past few years. So, we've been doing spot repairs and keeping an eye on things. I brought to you some photos of some of the issues that we've had recently, and Sean's presentation will just kind of summarize where things are at, kind of what we're doing about them, and what are some future possibilities and options.
Mr. McCula, do you have any idea just how high the water is? Because I've noticed of the docks, it's almost up to some of the docks around.
The, the docks that are remaining in the Marina have been a majority of the time underwater the past few weeks. So, our Parks Department's actually adding some risers to those to try to get them up another eight to ten inches, just so that the docks that are not being replaced are usable. So, the waters come up, and different weather patterns will change that elevation. You know, it'll change by a foot in an hour, just depending on whether it's high pressure or low pressure.
Just to speak to that too, as one of the slides, we'll be able to skip over when it comes up, but it's, the water levels are about two feet higher than average for this month right now, and nine inches higher than they were the same month last year, just to give you a frame of reference.
Just while you're bringing this up, a side question, when we're putting in the new docks at the Marina, do we have a way of adjusting for that height?
Yes.
Yes. So, they're, those are fixed docks, and, but they are adjustable. So, on a seasonal basis, we can raise them or lower them, and the sidewalk that's adjacent to the Marina is, is the ordinary high water level. But, we're gonna be able to raise the docks even higher than that, so even if that sidewalk happens to be underwater, those docks will still be up out of the water.
Good evening, Mayor Zelinski and council members. Sean Middleton, engineer of record. Thad asked us to present on the erosion that's occurred really since this last fall and winter, and pretty specific kind of to the west end of the Riverwalk. There's other issues on the Riverwalk, but this is more towards the west end where higher erosion rates have been happening. So, I'm just gonna quickly hit on some of the causes and future concerns. I'm gonna talk independently about the Riverwalk and bank erosion, and they're definitely not independent, depending where you're at, they affect each other. But for the purpose of this presentation, there's times I'm just gonna separate that out because it, just makes it cleaner, I think, to talk about. We've just, you know, really got into the early stages of looking at options and preventable measures. I am gonna hit on some of the things we've discussed. There'll be a lot of discussions to have with the state, Corps of Engineers down the road, and we've broken those up into short-term and long-term approach or solutions, and I'll go over those. You just mentioned the lakes. Currently, the Lake Michigan's at five eighty-one, that's elevation above sea level. But, important take homes here are, it's nine inches higher than it was a year ago, it's twenty-four inches higher on average for this month. It's predicted to come up another four to six inches by July. That's seasonally, the normal time, the lake peaks out, starts heading back down. If it reaches that level, it'll be one foot below the highest it's ever been. And so, we're within a foot of the all-time high in Lake Michigan if it reaches the July heights. So, we're about a foot and a half below it right now. And that was in October of eighty-six. So, obviously, the lake levels are a big potential cause. Wave action would be right up there as another one. In two thousand and five, there was a study done by the Corps, it was, it had a specific purpose, but one of the big take homes on that study was, a lot of the wave energy is really directed towards the south half of the channel, well into the harbor. And so, when you have wave directions from basically west-northwest, sustained winds, you're kind of sending those waves right down the heart of the channel. And then those will refract off that and reflect off the walls that are out there and kind of get bounced over onto the south shore. And so, their study picked that up, and it's, you know, and you can see it. And so, their study picked that up and it's, you know, and you can see it when it's happening like that, it's pretty obvious. But, um, it isn't just something that's, uh, been observed, it's actually been studied and kind of, uh, predicted. And so, they looked at a lot of different events, but the bottom, you know, one of the take homes is a lot of the energy is being sent to the south side of the shoreline. In addition to wave action, there's ice action, and so this year was, uh, because of the high water levels and the wave, and high waves coming in during the winter, ice was pushed up against the Riverwalk, causing erosion and causing damage to the, to the Riverwalk itself. We've had a lot of unusual weather events, um, the, the sage or meteor tsunami, meteor tsunami is another name for them. Uh, I won't get into the details, the difference between sages and meteor tsunamis due to the time we're at, but, um, but they're unique events, they're considered unique events, even though we've had two of them now in the last two years. So, uh, that's just a photo on the bottom right from, you know, when the water was at one of its higher levels during that meteor tsunami. So, some of this got brought up earlier, but just to give you a little sense of the protection of the banks. And you may or may not be familiar with this, if you're, you know, if you're boating or using the channel a lot, but just to kinda break it down. Starting on the north side, next to the Coast Guard, there's this, uh, you know, permanent seawall, um, with protected riprap behind it, that was a core project. Just beyond that, there's some heavy riprap just to the, uh, east of the end of that seawall. And then beyond that, on the north side, it's unprotected channel, and it's primarily sand. And so, highly eratable, um, soils and, and no protection, so the orange is no protection to the east on the north side. On the south side, as people will be a lot more familiar with it, boy, there's broken slabs of concrete, uh, west of the boat ramp all the way up to the channel section. On the east side of the boat, boat ramp, similar protection, broken concrete, old sidewalk is used for protection there. And then as you kinda move beyond that, there's a couple sections of seawall that vary between wood and steel, sheet piling in different conditions. And then just beyond that, about three or four homes past that, you basically get into another section of unprotected shoreline. So, again, where it's orange, now you're back to just unprotected shoreline, uh, and typically sandy, steep banks. It was mentioned about the dredging, uh, and just, uh, I won't get into details of history of dredging on, on the channel, but just one small take home I wanted to bring to everybody's attention was. Uh, the project, the Manistee Harbor Project, has a section that is identified as, um, performing no maintenance on it. Because of high banks and risk of erosion. So, this little area in white shown with a three here is identified as, as not to be dredged for the, for the very purpose, for the known purpose or the problems with causing, uh, bank erosion. The, on the top, this graphic here is, this is a survey that was done last year on the bottom of the channel. And the blue, the blue numbers across there represent depths that meet the channel specifications. It's deep enough, it's to the channel geometry that's supposed to be there. The areas in red are areas that are shallower than what it should be. And if you look at this area kinda on the right side, the blue, the blue on the picture narrows up. And that's because they're, um, intentionally not dredging the full width of the channel for some of the reasons that were entered, you know, talked about earlier, and because of that no maintenance section. So, just, it just gives you a little perspective on what the bottom looks like and how it narrows through the areas where there's steep banks. So, starting with the Riverwalk where the existing damages are, um, on the very, on the right side of this photo, there's a couple areas that are getting fixed in our current contract. Uh, the, the net shed, historical net shed that's out there's got some differential settlement. And there's a section of the Riverwalk that was, um, pushed up, it's called ice jacking, it's been lifted up. And, uh, it was pretty, pretty substantial. That's gonna get taken care of with our current contract. But farther to the west, just below the overlook, the First Street overlook, um, specifically even below the retaining wall at the overlook. There was a fair amount of damage that was done, uh, to the Riverwalk itself, and it's got a couple photos. Uh, the net shed I mentioned, it's got some differential settling, you can kinda see that in that photo. And then just adjacent to it, there's an area where the Riverwalk has been jacked up by ice, we'll be fixing that with this current contract. This is the area of, of, uh, wave and ice damage that's below the overlook. So, the top picture was done, occurred in the fall, we had some pretty significant waves that, um, damaged the Riverwalk. And then later on in the season, uh, ice damage kinda finished it off and expanded that area of, uh, impact. I, I forgot to mention the previous slide, but there is a tree that has fallen down in the Riverwalk, actually hit it and damaged it. This is just to the west of the net shed is where this location would be. So, we, we kinda briefly looked at, you know, what happens if we don't do anything, you know, if we have, if we don't intervene. And, specific to the Riverwalk, um, the wave and ice damage is gonna continue, especially with the high, high levels. And there's parts of the Riverwalk that are definitely more exposed than others, and this west end has that. There's, there's either a lower section of the Riverwalk below the, um, overlook. Or back to the east of there, the Riverwalk is kinda just out farther away from the bank. With time, it's eroded, it's more exposed, so there's just, um, exposure and potential damage from ice and waves. Also, the loss of soil below the piers, you know, with time becomes more and more of a problem. And right now, it seems pretty, pretty stable based on some of our last inspections. But if there is soil loss and it continues, then there, then we're kinda gonna be sitting up on stilts and it's gonna lose some stability. Definitely, there's potential for additional falling trees in the walk. A lot of this is because of bank erosion, but a couple of these pictures, you can see how they hang over, um, significantly. And those have slowly been dropping down towards the Riverwalk and will have to be dealt with at some point. And then just the Riverwalk is aging, it's, uh, you know, fairly old, boards are getting replaced all the time by the city. But there's parts of it that have shifted and moved around, and it just, it's a function of time and, um, age on the, that will continue to be an area of concern. I'm gonna switch over to bank erosion. And this map, uh, basically, I'll start on the, I guess I'll start east of, or west of the, um, the boat ramp. There's a section that is near the First Street Pump Station or, uh, the Fish Cleaning Station is probably a better, uh, marker there. That eroded this last winter and it's, the bank is sloughed off. If, as you move to the east, there is below the overlook, uh, First Street overlook. Whether it's below the retaining wall or below the parking lot in general, there's a lot of erosion in that area. And that's some area we put some rocks into last year, is trying to buy some time, temporary fixes. And now it's eroding adjacent to that, um, uh, high-impact area. As you move to the, farther to the east, you leave the overlook area and you get into where there's private properties along, uh, First Street, and some of, some of the, um, those owners have spoken tonight. But, but, but to the north of that is also still city-owned property, and I can show another graphic with that in a minute. And the areas just beyond some of those, uh, existing seawalls, there's significant erosion happening that we had pictures of from the last meeting, and I'll show again tonight. And that's in that unprotected area. So, these just some photos of the bank erosion, and I guess the point I just wanna call out here is, in both these photos, you can see to the right, the retaining wall. And that is not that far away, it's literally ten to fifteen feet away and several feet below it. And that's not a deep foundation retaining wall, the, the footing is up high. So, it's, that's a real concern that we're monitoring, um, that will need to get addressed, you know, quickly before we have impacts to the actual wall itself. This is kind of in the same area, but not underneath the retaining wall, but below the actual parking lot. And so, uh, probably not as critical as be, be, being below the retaining wall. But if we just let it go unchecked, eventually we could have problems with curb and gutter, railings falling in at that location. Uh, this is jumping to the west side, uh, by the Fish Cleaning Station and the Pump Station. And, uh, the area that started eroding this year. It hasn't reached to the sidewalk, but it left unchecked, it probably could get there. Probably more significantly have left it unchecked for a long time, it could get to the, have impacts on the pump station. So, these photos and the map are behind those private, the private properties. So, I'll start with the image on the right. And, um, in this picture, just off the picture, uh, just off that image would be the armory. And so, these are all the homes directly north of the armory. The black line that you see on here is, uh, I know it's a little tough to see, but that is the property line, um, of those parcels. So, to the south of that line is privately owned property, to the north of that line is city-owned property. So, the Riverwalk sits, sits on city-owned property and, uh, also owns the slope in that location. This area in red I have is, uh, fairly poor, but my, um, uh, graphic of where that erosion, the worst erosion is occurring, there's erosion occurring in this area. But definitely the worst erosion is occurring at this location. As viewed, it slipped, uh, moved to the picture on the left, this is an actual photograph of that. And this yellow line, certainly not survey grade, but is a rough idea of where the differential is between city-owned on the left and privately owned on, on the right. So, really up until now, it's been on city-owned property and it's starting to make a little drift over onto privately owned property. Same area looking west now, um, and these photos were taken a couple weeks apart, two to three weeks apart. I think even, there's probably even better photos now that, um, but what you can really observe, if you look closely, is that it has actually moved several feet. So, even over a couple week period, that is sloughed off a couple feet down the hill. So, similar to when I was talking about the Riverwalk, what are some of the impacts of left unchecked? And I guess I'm gonna go back real quick to this photo, that, just for reference. On this right picture, on the very right-hand side, there's an alley right here. In that alley is a city, uh, storm sewer that discharges, has an outfall to the river right here. And there's a sanitary sewer, it used to be the main interceptor that took all the water from the southwest and, and around here. It was, uh, cut off, but the, the, it's still active. And it serves all these properties from this point on Ri, on First Street, uh, back to the east. So, it's still an active sanitary sewer. So, if left unchecked, there is, you know, damages I mentioned, potentially sidewalk, the pump station would take a long time, but it could be impacted. Those outfalls I just mentioned, there's a manhole right on the top of the bluff, that's this picture here in the upper right. And it's got some erosion around it at the base of it, that's a storm. The good news is it's a storm outfall, if there's any good news to it. There's a sanitary sewer that manholes just back a few feet to the, uh, to the south. There's also the potential damaging the, the Riverwalk itself, if we have a, a large area sloughed off and hit the Riverwalk. And of course, the trees I mentioned earlier, um, are kind of an impact of the, of the erosion as well. And then we talked about private property, um, uh, being potentially damaged here, and you, as we talked about in previous photos. Again, we're very preliminary stages getting into this and, uh, and it, and a lot of the decisions are gonna be impacted by regulatory and working with the Corps and the DEQ or Eagle, I guess now you call it. So, short, short-term, on the Riverwalk, the biggest goal there is just getting it back open. And so, that'd be working below the overlook and getting the trees cleaned up. We've got some preliminary rough estimates of up to fifty thousand, um, dollars from our, our one contractor we have out there now. And Jeff's working on getting some other, uh, quotes as well. That is, um, the insurance has identified that as being, uh, a potential claim that we can file with the appropriate quotes. Long-term, on the Riverwalk specifically, on this west end, we have to look at a lot of things, but some of the, some of the issues are below the overlook, the Riverwalk is just, it's low relative to the protection it has in, with the rock. And it's low relative to the lake. And so, there may be ways we need to address that at that, that location. You know, moving it away from the slope so we can make a more gradual slope. To the east of that, there's, um, the Riverwalk is out a long ways into the, actually into the river. And so, the, you know, potentially, if it made sense or if it was needed, that could be relocated closer, so you don't have as much exposed piers. All of that can be very expensive, cause it's done out in the water, and we don't have any quotes on that. And the scope of it varies, so we have a broad range of costs. Funding for that is what we really need to work on. Um, we need to work, talk to the Corps, talk to private entities, grants, potential appropriations. So, there's a lot of work, legwork that we have to do on trying to figure out how to pay for these problems. On the bank erosion side, short-term, it's a little trickier, cause we've got the critical infrastructure we have to address. The insurance does not cover this bank erosion, they only cover structures. And so, we've, we have to look into how, what can we do to, in essence, buy time? Uh, protect some critical areas, uh, what that looks like, where the area is still to be determined, and what those costs are to be determined. But that would be more of in a short cycle, trying to get something done this year and figuring out how to pay for it. And then long-term, that's a fairly significant project, you know, this would be a decent-sized core project, um, to do. And there's a lot of potential solutions, but probably most likely, you're not gonna put in seawalls, A, they can be very expensive. And B, they kind of reflect the wave action around, and probably the Corps and the DEQ is not gonna be too keen on doing that. So, most likely, we're gonna be into a heavy reventment. Armoring, you know, basically big rocks along the shoreline, like you see below, um, oh, just to the west of the thirty-one bridge. Um, or you see in the, um, area adjacent to, uh, the seawall on the north side. It, it would not be the broken concrete, that's, wouldn't be an acceptable measure anymore. Uh, it needs to be angular stone that locks and you have, you have textiles. Above that line, you could do different things to improve the banks, could be soft engineering, vegetative cover. Again, the scope of that, we don't know, you know, how long, what the, what's gonna be permitted. So, that's, that cost could be anywhere from a couple hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, depending on the extent of it. And same thing there, we have no idea at the current moment exactly how we pay for that. And so, we're in the process of looking at this. Grants don't necessarily cover these type, these kinda things, you know, they're usually a recreational component, you need for it, so. So, that's kinda where we're at on, you know, big picture, twenty thousand-foot view costs and, um, planning. Our next immediate steps are to get it to work on those short-term repairs of the Riverwalk, whether that's with our current contractor when he's done or getting somebody else involved. We wanna perform a survey along that, compare that to twenty fifteen surveys. We need to start coordinating at a pretty high level with the Corps and, I, I mentioned Eagle there, that's what the DEQ used to be called. So, we get an understanding on design requirements. And then, we mentioned, I mentioned installing temporary measures, trying to figure out what those are, get those in place to kind of buy us some time, so we can look at these longer, more expensive alternatives. And then, as I mentioned, the funding research, so. And that's what I have.
A question. Good job, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have any kinda timeline scheduled right now on when things might start happening? Like, do you have an idea when you might start doing short-term?
On the, on the Riverwalk, Paul Jeff does.
Yeah, on the Riverwalk, we've been in contact with the insurance company, we've actually filed that claim. They've determined that it's a, an acceptable loss or a covered loss for us. Um, so now we're trying to find a contractor that'll give us a, a written quote. The first thing that we try to do is go through Fisher Contracting that's replacing the docks at the marina and try to do a change order through them, uh, because they're already being paid with insurance proceeds from that damage. Um, they're not all that excited about committing additional work because of their tight timeframes and resources. And, uh, contractors are really busy, so that's what we're working on right now, is to try to find somebody that has the ability to do it. Get the insurance company to approve those costs and, and approve a contract with them and, and then get them moving on it.
The erosion end of it. Any timeline on that? I, I don't see this getting better, it looks like, from the pictures I seen tonight, and when I walked down here, it's, it's, it's noticeably, um, changing rapidly.
It, it will continue to get worse as the lake rises, as storms continue to hit. Um, freighter traffic, boat traffic, all of those things impact it and will continue to make it worse.
I guess that's why I'm asking, do we have a timeline of when we're going to address it, even if it's a short-term?
Well, some of the short-term things, uh, I don't wanna spend money that's gonna, we have to spend some money short-term. Um, and so, we're working on, well, working on what those alternatives are right now. Um, I'm setting up a meeting with, uh, and again, it's, the, the Department of Environmental Quality has now renamed the Department of Environmental Great Lakes and the Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy. So we're setting up meetings with Eagle, I'm trying to get the Corps of Engineers up here to acknowledge that we've got some issues, try to get them to acknowledge that they may have some responsibility and, and try to get them engaged. So I've, I've spoken with representatives from both and, and we're trying to get those coordinated to get up here. Number one, we need, we need them involved with the long-term solution, but we also have to get expedited permitting for the short-term. And then we're going to have to identify funding on how we do, how we pay for that. And then we've got to find a contractor that's got time to, to do the work.
Now, when we, when we talked about the, when the backfill, would we be backfilling up to the private property on First Street? And then trying to, to mitigate some of the loss that they've already incurred? Is that part of that long-term plan?
We haven't even got into that, that detail of discussion on it yet.
And is, and the question is, you know, I know, you know, they drop certain rocks and in, like in ocean areas where they had a lot of erosion, they had temporary things that they could literally drop in place. Have we thought about seeing what we could do in the interim just to kind of keep things from getting any worse over the next year or two?
That's a possibility. There's, I don't even know what the proper term is, but now that they make large bulk bags that you can fill with either stone or, or, you know, aggregate.
Right.
That's probably similar.
That's what they use in some of the ocean areas down in New Jersey when they had, to try to protect from the next storm coming.
Yeah, oversized sandbags kind of looking at there. Like Jeff was saying, one of the things, we want to make sure we don't kind of step on our own feet and do something that we have to undo. If we can do it in a way that Corps agrees and the regulatory agencies agree, and we can use it as a foundation for the next step, that's really important, which we don't want to rush in too quick.
Yeah, and where the erosion is, is occurring adjacent to the, the residential areas along First Street, again, that's the narrowest maintained portion of that channel. And, and then it obviously slopes up underwater, but then when it comes out of the water, it's very steep on, on both sides. So even putting something in there temporary, you know, we're going to have to get the regulatory agencies to make sure they sign off and, and maybe trying to get them to even do it.
And then the other question is, we only talked about the, basically that, that entrance into the harbor. How about the other unprotected areas on the other side of, from Memorial Drive down to Manistee Lake? Is, is there any noticeable deterioration in those areas and do we have a plan?
We haven't seen anything, nothing's been reported, I walked that probably two weeks ago, didn't notice anything. We actually just refurbished a barge that we had confiscated last year and we got that in the water today. So our guys will be working on the docks, but we can also kind of do some recon along the shorelines as well. The section that's between Maple Street and basically where the ban shell is down to Memorial, or Memorial Bridge, that's all heavy armor stoned and is, is properly towed in and at the proper depth. So that seems to be pretty stabilized. But I will tell you that there's erosion, we're having high water level and erosion issues at our Ninth Street boat launch. We have issues at the Arthur Street boat launch. We did some twenty-some thousand dollars worth of repair work to that a couple of years ago. And where we stopped was where there was several feet of shoreline extending out from the wall. That shoreline is absolutely gone. So that's another area that I've got contractors coming to look at and how can we jack up portions of the block wall that's failed? And right now, there's only one piece of it that's, that's out of place. But we're going to have to secure it and rearmour that shoreline as well.
You mentioned, when you were giving your presentation, Sean, that, that there might be, one of the solutions might be to move the riverwalk closer to the shoreline. Is there anything new that we can do in constructing a new riverwalk along that that would be sturdier and less likely to fail?
One thing I will say is that riverwalk is, is pretty impressive how well it is standing where it's at. Because it's out, it's, I've been told that when it was originally put, put in, it was on dry land. There was literally put in the ground, not, nobody had any hip waders or nothing on. Now that's in four to five feet of water. And you'd really think from the bottom of the riverwalk down to where it actually enters the ground, it's probably nine, eight, nine feet. And you would think the thing would be swinging and swaying every time you walked on it, and it's pretty solid. I think by getting it closer, you can get your foundations in deeper. That would make it a lot sturdier just in itself. And there is other means, but they start costing more money. So it's, I think it's a good design, it just, the question is, over five, ten years from now, if we continue, if you lost more sand, will it get to the point where they get, gets a little?
And even moving further west than that, where we have that hundred, hundred fifty feet of literally destroyed wood, all of that was poured in a different method. They poured concrete foundations on top of the, the stone and concrete sidewalk that was there. And then the riverwalk was built up above that. The foundations look like they're pretty solid right now, but the ice and wave action, it actually pushed the ice underneath it and popped it up in the air and broke it off the foundation. So there's different construction techniques all along the riverwalk.
Yeah, that side almost could be the opposite because it's so close to the wall there and then so steep that getting it away from there is going to help the, prevent that wall, the retaining wall, to give us some slope. But then if we move it out, we got to protect it and it'd be higher, so that's a lot of the, that's a lot we got to look at.
Anything else? Thank you. Concerns and comments. This is a time for, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read. Is there any comments on municipal services? Yes? This is about municipal services or city involvement. Please approach your podium, state your name and address.
Jim Hansen, Street 34, River Street. There were two, two conversations, almost two different views on the legalization of marijuana and how this, how the city should proceed. And one, the, the one that, that kind of concerned me the most was the, the diminishing of the penalties or whatever associated with, with use, I think when it was brought down to the hundred dollar fine as opposed to a five hundred dollar fine. You know, not enforcing laws is, is one of the problems we have in the country today with the behavior we have in today. And, but I don't, I don't, I, I think the way to adjust it, to address it is not so much maybe the criminalization of marijuana, but what you do under any influence of marijuana should be dealt with toughly. It shouldn't, there shouldn't be a lot of slack on that, well, he was stoned, so he did that. That, that's, just like being intoxicated any other way, should be dealt with. And then secondly, is, would, would enforcement of recreational marijuana be handled the same as, say, say, smoking? In other words, if it's a no-smoke zone like a bar or a restaurant, do they, does someone get to smoke a joint in there with you? You know, because it's not the same, it's not governed by the tobacco issue and the health issues, supposedly health issue. But it is annoying and it stinks. So, so that would have to be a consideration. And if it's a no-smoking zone, that applies to marijuana as well. At least that would be my opinion. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sign them, we'll go to officials and staff, Mr. Taylor.
Nothing at this time. Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Taylor. Let's see, we got, how about DPW, you got anything else? Mr. Bradford? Who am I missing? Oh, public safety. Anybody here from public safety? No. Ooh, we're unprotected.
No. We're over there.
Oh, okay. We are protected, all right. Okay, thank you. What's that? You have nothing?
Nothing.
Thank you. How about council members? How about Ms. Huniak?
I just want to wish all the mothers Happy Mother's Day this weekend.
Mr. Kowalski?
I see you removed a couple of signs from River Street that we're going to remove anymore.
Still waiting to get a, a final opinion from the traffic engineer from Spicer Group. So I reminded Sean this morning that we're still waiting for that.
Okay. Councilman Smaskey?
Kind of unrelated, but Ms. Hanson had mentioned the fact, you know, Manistee is trying to attract, you know, young people to our city as well with jobs and housing and other things. And I, I just have to voice my disappointment with Munson Hospital's decision to close the birthing rooms. And I'm hoping that there's still some opportunity for them to maybe relook that issue. But I think it, it is, it is hard to take.
Mr. Cooper? Mayor Proton?
Well, I, I want to thank the citizens that came forward tonight to talk about the erosion problems. And, you know, I think we're all very concerned on your behalf. And it's a, it's a huge issue that we're grappling with, with many aspects. So I can only imagine how frustrating it must be to look at your backyard and I'm, I'm sorry. And I hope that we can find a, a solution that will be satisfactory to everybody. That's, that's it.
Mr. Goodfie?
I just want to thank everybody who came and participated tonight. We do appreciate it, we'd like to hear from you. I want to thank Sean and staff for really trying to jump on this erosion problem and getting things done. Didn't mean to nail you down about a timeline, but I see it eroding rather rapidly. Do appreciate it, appreciate everybody. With that, I'll take most of the adjournments.
Hey, I'll make that mention.
We're adjourned.